And City Council, it's Monday, July 20th, 2015 at 7:03 PM. Our first order of business tonight during this regular session of council is to establish a quorum. We do have five of our seven council members present this evening. The next order of business is disposition of the minutes from the regular session of council held on July 6th, 2015. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I support.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from the regular session on July 6th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. We will have next communications. I did receive a communication from a citizen on the east side this week concerned with all the rain we've had and tall grass and neighbors mowing and then the grass ending up in the street, that this could potentially be blocking the storm drains. So, a reminder to folks that how important it is to keep those storm drains cleared. Try and keep the grass on your lawn and that citizens are responsible for 18 inches out from the curb. And, most of the time, we're drawing attention to litter, but this time of year, it ends up being grass. So, just the importance of that for our city crews and for our water safety. Now, do we have communications from other council members? Councilmember Patterson?
A couple items tonight, three. Again, I have a communication from a retail space owner, and it was during Ohio Brew Week this year, and it was something that I think could be looked at and at least as it applies to other retail spaces for other events that take place, such as possibly looking on the bricks, Bounty on the Bricks. But it was a concern over not being reached out to or contacted about the closure of the street and what, how that could impact them. So, again, not necessarily, something that I think council needs to take action on, but it's something that I think should be at least explored moving forward by the organizers or possibly by council. The other item that I have is that Arts Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee met last week to talk about the pool and the pool plans. Not so much the pool plans, but appropriating funding to move forward, and they voted four to zero in favor of having council appropriate $7.3 million in moving forward the pool. Mayor, I don't know if you want to expand on that at all or not.
I wasn't at the meeting, you were, so.
Alright, fair enough. So that will come forward in committee next week. And the third item is the armory stabilization is, the armory is leaking with through the mortar and whatnot, and to further stabilize it, we'll be looking at having the building re-pointed, the entire building, which looks like it comes in at about $82,000 to have that done for the entire building envelope. So that'll come forward next week as well in committee.
And committee, Finance Personnel Committee, essentially just authorized to actually, to put out the bid, actually, I forget the word, to suspend the bid, what's the word?
Aviate.
Aviate the bid. We had RVC looking at, we met last Friday, I think it was, with RVC, and David Varance of RVC had actually gone out looking for bids to say, you know, look at the pointing and the conditions. This is that $7,000 you appropriated to look at the structure. And he got two bids, one being about $82,000 or $83,000, I forget exactly, to re-point the building. And again, make it waterproof, put sealant on it. So, we have some money in the $58112, both in building improvements, about $62,000 and change. We have about $23,000 in vehicles. It was my mistake, I thought we were going, that we bought a van, as you probably noticed for the custodians. I didn't realize we took it, I put the money in there forgetting that we had taken out the $2,014. So, we have the money there. It will pretty much zero out a lot of the building improvements for the lands of buildings. So I'm a little bit concerned about the TC5 hundreds. And again, this is the $58112, not the general fund. But at the same time, I think with the bid as it is, the condition of the building is something we should, and the desire of council to move forward with this, realize that we were actually meeting for the certified local government grant, which is the next phase. And then we also have the EPA, Port Authority EPA's grant to look at the abatement, any type of environmental abatement there. So we've got, we've got this chain of things going on that we want to pay attention to if you want to keep moving forward. And one, of course, is maintain the building so it doesn't fall down before we get there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry to say so much.
No, that's good. This is, this is important as we move forward.
Any other communications from other council members?
I have just one item to share. Tomorrow will be the Bicycle Celebration, co-hosted by the Ohio University Office of Sustainability and the City of Athens. This will be taking place at 10:30 in the morning on the bike path near Peeden Stadium. So if you are coming by vehicle and need parking, you can either request a parking pass from the Office of Sustainability or utilize parking meters. Otherwise, come by by on foot and the parking's free. This short ceremony to celebrate Athens' bicycle-friendly status and the reopening of that section of bike path will be followed by a short bike ride down the bike path to the shelter house near the pool. And the mayor and president of the university will say a few words before the bike ride. So, we hope that folks from the community will join us.
And I think there's a reception at the shelter.
That's right, and there'll be bike helmets and water bottles given away by the Athens' City-County Health Department as well as Ohio Health.
Okay. Communications from other elected officials, Mayor?
I'll keep the speeches short for the bike ceremony, bicycle ceremony. This is to make us a bicycle-friendly community. In terms of grass mowing, realize when you leave the grass in the grass, it actually kind of composts and helps the soil there when you talk about people shooting out the street there. A couple of items, let's see, there was a PSA coming out about the free pool for the July 22nd. This will be sponsored by the Elks Lodge 973. It's basically from 12 to 6, free entry to pool, food, drinks, and inflatables. I don't know what that means, I guess the things float around with. As well as the Athens Public Transit will be actually giving you free rides to that location too. So when you get on a bus, say you're going to the pool, and it'll be free. And again, it will be pretty much most a day on that too. The other item is I received notice that, again, the county is going to have their series of meetings concerning the sewer project at Radford Road. They've informed the residents there in that affected area, there'll be two meetings held, one the 23rd of July, the other one the 28th of July, at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Athens Community Center. Again, this is to discuss where they're moving forward to create a sewer system outside the city. We, if you remember, have entered into a agreement, which they have yet to say yea or nay, to actually work with our wastewater treatment plant to bring their sewage into that to process it. The idea, of course, is to save, share services and save money, at least for all members concerned. So there's two meetings for those members outside the city. And again, it really doesn't affect us directly, but it behoves us to just be aware of it, that there will be citizenry, 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 sorry, who will be interested and want to know about it, so we should be involved in it. And I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Law Director Elias?
Yes.
Okay. And Kathy Hecht, our auditor?
Thank you, yes, I'm afraid I do have a report tonight. Good evening. I thought this was going to be your last meeting, or I could have saved it for next week for a committee meeting, but it's pretty important information, so I'll go ahead and maybe by next week you'll have a lot of questions. I'm here to talk about HB5, which was passed last December affecting our tax and how we collect our tax revenue. And I gave you all a handout, things that council needs to be aware of and things you're going to have to do. We're going to have to pass a new ordinance, and it needs to be, what we would like to have happen is have it passed by December 1st, so there's no emergency clause on it. And we want to start it through in October, so there are no suspensions. There are a lot of changes in that, and we want the information out there as soon as possible, so it can be talked about more than once and all that kind of thing. We learned a lot of things. On July 8th through 10th, the Ohio Municipal League held their annual tax conference. It was three days this year instead of the usual two because of all these tax changes. And, we got a lot of information from that. So some of these things that I'm putting out here are really necessary based on, you know, the law. One thing that we need is that it needs to have the effective date of January 16th in the ordinance, not just the 30 days it's official or anything like that. Like I said, the majority of changes are mandated by the state and we have no say. We need a new ordinance, we're not changing what we already have. Our tax codes are 1501 and 1502 right now. The reason for that is the new one, which there's no 14 in there, and maybe Debbie or whoever can tell me if there's another chapter that we need to use, but needs to be effective beginning January 1st of 16. We will still be collecting 15 taxes, 2015, and delinquent taxes after January 1st of 16 rolls around. So, if we change our law, then we can't collect those taxes under our old rules, which is what we need to do. Does that make sense? We want to start in January of 16 and collect taxes under the new rules. So we have to keep that as our law. If we don't have this in place, there is wording in this new law that says if we don't have this in place, we can't collect taxes, period. So, or at least for next year. So, we really need to get this moving along, and we have a plan, in case you're wondering. But, late this afternoon, the mayor sent out all this, a lot of information, I don't know how many of you happened to see that yet, because it did come out late in the day. But, it's really all the information that we have, although we have the advantage of actually being at this meeting and, you know, learning more about it. But we, they have a sample ordinance that council needs to look at. We want to use all those whereas's. The last one protects the city for adopting laws that could be considered unconstitutional in conflict with the Ohio Supreme Court rulings or the Ohio Revised Code. There might be some lawsuits brought regarding home rule and different things for things that they've changed. So we want to be covered by that and not be sued because we're following this new law. So, just to kind of put that briefly. We need to add our language, which is a lot. Employers with over 50 employees must file reconciliations electronically. We want to add that. We have most of people doing it now, it's kind of like when we made employees go to direct deposit several years ago. It's a more efficient way, and we're already set up to do that. So we'd like, you know, like I said, over 50 employees, we're not asking very, very small businesses who don't have as much equipment or whatever to be able to do this, but anyone with over 50 employees should do that. We already have a lot of people filing electronically. We also want to add our own language, add that eliminating the 1% credit on business income. And this is a very complicated one. I don't know how far I want to go into that tonight, but we have a 1% credit for taxes paid in other taxing entities, so that people aren't paying, you know, twice the full tax, twice. However, because of the changes in this new law, we, we will still, we still want to grant the 1% on withholding tax, qualifying wages. But as far as the business taxes go, because of all the wording, I won't go too far down this line, but it makes it possible for businesses to file for refunds from us when they didn't pay us anything. Because now it's, they file in one, it's a consolidation filing. So for example, Nelsonville is the other filing entity in Athens County, but we apply this to any, anywhere in the United States. If you have another business or work somewhere else part of the time, and we credit wages to, you know, credit to any income where you paid another entity, okay? So, and this can get really sticky, and tax administrators need to communicate about whether that will happen, but what this does is make it possible for them to file for a refund for losses for us when they never paid us any taxes because they've already paid it in another entity. So that's a protection for us that really needs to get in there, and we can talk about that more, maybe when you see our actual language, it will help. Also, contracting with outside council. We have someone, there is a consultant that works with the OML, and we had him help with our, some wording in our tax code several years ago. We contacted him months ago and had, we're on his list to help us rewrite this, to include what we need in there. And so once we get this together, which we hope to do a lot of this during August, it will go to the law director's office for their review, as it always has, theirs is the final review, and then it comes to you. So hopefully, between August and September, we can get this all done. As you saw, or, well, I'll show you at the end, but also, then these are some of the new things, the Board of Appeals, there's a new makeup of the board. Now, since I've been up there, this is my 12th year, we've only had one appeal. However, with all these changes, that could change. There's a new makeup of the board, they must be appointed and have two-year terms, they're allowed to serve unlimited terms. But, they must have, we would like to, we put this in there, but we'd like to have in the ordinance that the board member can be a non-resident. Something you can think about, but, you know, there are a lot of people, professionals who work in Athens and maybe don't live in the city limits, who would be good. I'll tell you one thing I found out last time, when we didn't, we hadn't had an appeal in so long, that the people who were on that, I couldn't even, I never did get a hold of one of them. But I asked a lot of people before I got three people to say yes. So, it's just, people don't really want to do that. You know, you're, you're in there telling them, yes, you have to go ahead and pay the city, or, you know, whatever. So, it's, it's not really a, you know, favorite board to be on. So anyway, we'd like to have that option to go outside the city limits if necessary. And it has to be in the ordinance, well, that was that, two members are appointed by council, and one member serves at the discretion of the mayor. So there are three members, which is how it has been. But they also recommend that we have one or two alternates in case a member's not available. There are some other changes to how they meet that, you know, we're going to have to rewrite our, our process. We have an appeals process, we have a board, and we've allowed them to meet, to do emails or do a conference call to meet, but now they have to physically get together and, and talk about this stuff. So, it can be quite a process. You know, the taxpayer has to file, we have to give our, you know, response, and then they have to decide. And so, anyway, these are some things that council will have to be involved in. And next, I'd like to talk about changes that we're going to have to do, just so you have an idea of what we're looking at in my office. The tax forms and instruction update, we, we update these every year, but they'll have to be updated for the next three years due to the phase-in of the net operating loss carryforward, which we don't have it all now, and it's in there now for five years. And that's the one that we used to have. I came to council, we made the change to get rid of that, 2005, I believe. Anyway, we, we know that we're probably going to lose $60,000 just on that one, one thing that's being added in there. So all of this updating will cost extra money and time each year. Website updates, we need a, the new Board of Appeals process has to be on the website. The taxpayers' rights to appeal is also part of this law, new law, and it'll have to be in there. New power of attorney forums need to be created and posted. Links to the old and new ordinance need to be added. So, basically, and I know this can be worked out, and I don't know if there'll be a cost to it, but I was under the impression that each department had, you know, that we have limited space on the website, otherwise we'd pay more, which is okay, but we'll probably have to do that. The software updates, we're unaware of any additional costs at this time, however, CMI, which is our financial software provider, has not completed the updates yet, so we don't know how, how that will all pan out. Taxpayer updates, we're going to be sending out postcards to taxpayers advising of some of the rule changes. There's really too much to advise of all of them, so we'll focus on the changes that affect most of the accounts, and of course, they can always get in touch with us. We've done this in the past to businesses and accountants when we've changed our, our tax increase, say when we went to 1.65 to 1.75, so that they know ahead of time, but we're going to put a little more information on there and just to help them. Refund changes, we need to review our refund process with changes to the occasional entrance language, the 20-day rule. It's not just a change in the days, there are other changes connected to that. There's also an involvement, right now, on the 12 days, once they hit that 13th day, we can tax them from day one. Well, now we can't do that, we've lost 20 days, and we start over. But, we also have to go by a preponderance of the day. So we won't, we won't be able to allow some businesses around town and entities, we've allowed to use a percentage that's an average of what we think they spend in the city, which is where their home base is, but they spend lots of other time somewhere else in the county. They'll have to track them. We did this years ago, and, and there's one business, a private business that, you know, they'd have to send in, you know, a stack of calendars for the year and where they were and what they did every day. And it has to include sick and vacation because we count that as time worked in the city. And, so there'll be a lot more involved in reviewing those for refunds. And, because their businesses withhold entirely, and then we refund for time they spend outside the city. And, some of the other things are the businesses under 500,000 gross receipts, which is a lot of businesses. That's a lot of money for small businesses who are located outside the city limits, but as we know, probably most of them do most of their business in the city limits. So then we have to deal with preponderance of a day issues for that, which actually means someone could come and work in the city for three hours every day all year long and not pay any taxes, and then, you know, work the other five hours somewhere else. And so, we, we expect that to be about a $10,000 to $20,000 loss for the city on those, because that's probably about 90% of the businesses are, those small businesses under 500,000. And so refunds will be more time-consuming for us. So these are things that we're looking at. Do you have any questions so far? I was just going to go over a couple of other things.
Kathy, when you talk about the loss of money from other companies coming at us and saying, is that part of the net operating loss piece of that, or is that something entirely different? I mean, basically, if they can come out?
Which 20-day rule is, oh yeah, yeah, no, that was the, yeah, net operating loss.
Yeah, you said some companies could come in, even though they don't pay taxes, could pull taxes out of us?
Uh huh.
And that's part of that?
If we're not paying attention, if we don't have it in our tax code to cover ourselves.
Okay. And do we, will we have to repeal the cap to 15 after a year or so, or a couple of years?
Oh, no, I'd say we can go back on people's taxes for seven years. So, we won't be repealing that anytime soon.
Okay, and I sent?
We have delinquent taxpayers, which is why we contracted with CCA. We can go back for seven years, so no, that's not, I wouldn't be in any, you know, hurry to repeal that. I mean, it doesn't hurt to sit there. Basically, we have a new one starting January 1st of 16, moving forward, so, you know, it needs to sit there.
And I did send this to you, Tina, Paula, and two of the members of the Finance Personnel, Steve and Jeff. Again, I'm not sure, that was the mayor's version of being sent, so it may not be succinct or good enough.
It's exactly what we have.
Okay.
Exactly what we have, anybody's welcome to it, although I don't know, I'm not going to spend a lot of time reading it until we get, until our consultant works on it. It's up to you if you want to. Basically, they took a 27-page state law and turned it into 55. With our personal, you know, local things, it's going to probably be about 60 pages for our tax law. So what was sent out is a letter from the Ohio Municipal League from this conference where they sent this out. Then we have Frost, Brown &amp; Todd, is the consulting firm that worked with the OML, to put this together for us, taking, you know, what the Senate passed and putting it into a tax code. So they've got some, their information there, the sample ordinance. As I said, these whereas's are very important, that's why the OML put that out there. There's Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Exhibit A is things that we, we need to look at, which would be our, be local things, you know, like our tax rate, it's 1.75 in Nelsonville, and, you know, things like that, that are still specific to our taxing entity. And then, B is...
Kathy, since we're in Athens, what is it here for, I mean, you said Nelsonville.
Yeah, Nelsonville's 1.75, ours is 1.65. So, this is what, you know, we need to follow to set up our code. So as you go through this, and I don't know if this was in your attachment, I didn't look at it because I already had this, but anything yellow is stuff that we have to change, okay, that will have to be made for us. That's, I know. So it's, you know, it's going to be involved, and as I said, we've, we've got a consultant who's going to come in and do that. Once he gets that going, you know, then, then we can go through and point out the changes and what is, you know, all that numbering, we have to do all the numbering and depending on how we set up the things, some of these things are optional and things like that. So, this was all handed out at the, at the tax conference. I believe Law Director Lysen is going to attend her Law Director's Conference for the OML, they'll be talking about it there also, so that she'll, we've, we've been communicating with her, but that will give her some more information from their side of it for their review. And, I guess, the only other thing that I wanted to talk about was Tina, Tina Timberman, our tax administrator. She was a presenter on the occasional entrance at the conference, and she also sat on all the Q&amp;A panels. So, she received a very nice thank you note, and I just thought I'd like to read if you don't mind. Tina, I want to thank you very much for all your help throughout this whole reform process and for your excellent presentation as part of the tax conference. I think the three days was a good event, and we couldn't have done it without your time and energy. Thank you very much, all my best, Kent Scarratt, who is the Director of Communications for the Ohio Municipal League. So she's been very active in that, which is a plus for us because she understands all these changes. Sometimes I have to have her tell me two or three times what this really means, you know, to sink in, but she's really, she's really on top of it, and, you know, she's worked very hard on this. So, we want to get it right, we don't want to lose any more money than we have to, and, you know, if we're, we're lucky, we'll, we'll get it right and maybe at least come out even when we start going through this. One other thing to add about Tina, she will come to council and talk to you in September or October if you want her to, and, and talk about this as we go through.
Kathy, a couple of things. One is I have heard from other mayors how great Tina is, they actually consider her credible in terms of the knowledge that she has. So, kudos to that, I think I'm glad they recognize that. And again, I've had legislators come up to me and say, you know, the presentation from your city has been exceptional. The other thing is that what I sent was to a limited amount. If you think it's different or should be improved, I could send it to the other council members, but why don't you look at it and decide whether it should be, I mean, I want all eyes on board, so it just has to be?
I think you sent all of this.
Okay, should I forward it to all the members, or, I mean, it's going to be homework.
It's up to them. If nothing else, you could look at the ordinance, like the basic ordinance with the whereas's, and then, then the tax code's attached to that as part of the ordinance. So, you're free to glance through it, I'm, I'm happy to share, I actually meant to send something out today.
Maybe we could sell copies.
I wouldn't pay for it, but hey, you could try.
Well, but Kathy, don't you think it's important also, I mean, people may be asking us questions about, not that I'm a tax code expert... -a tax code expert or anything, but at least we know where to, uh, send people to discuss it, but-
They absolutely can do that, but some of these things, it would, would be nice for you to understand, um, as I said, I mentioned two of the things that are gonna affect us the most, the net operating loss carryforward and the, um, occasional entrance day rule, um, and those are things, um, that, you know, it would be nice for you to just be able to go ahead and explain to people. Now, she has, you know, poster boards and things that she took for her presentations, and, um, so I can have her come and explain some of those things to you. Those are some basic things, and I'll tell you what else is gonna happen, is, um, the accountants in town are not really getting any training on these changes, and they're not attending these conferences, and so, you know, I, I suspect, um, any training, the Ohio Society of CPAs has been behind this, and the Chamber has also been very supportive. Uh, if they provide any training, they'll probably charge them for it, um, so I don't know how many of them will, you know, try to do that, they'll rely on our office to teach them, but, you know, we kinda wish they'd spoken up and said, hey, you know, before all these things went into play, but, um, yeah, it, it would be nice, it's a small town, and people probably, there's a lot of businessmen here, and a lot of accountants, and, um, you know, we're happy to teach you whatever you wanna know.
Well, all this is out in the public domain now, I mean-
Oh, yeah, this is public record.
I have a copy of it, you know, I could pass on to anybody, and I'm thinking of a couple of CPA friends of mine who probably'd like to have a copy, whether they'd like it or not.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause I like my taxes done right.
Well, there you go, that's, you know, it's a little bit scary, because these are gonna be a lot of major changes for them. There's a lot of things that affect businesses, you know, their schedules, that they, and, and whether they're qualifying wages, as I said, we're only gonna give the credit, um, withholdings now, not for business taxes, because they can, um, you know, apply for a refund, um, you know, I can give you an example of that, um, somebody who has rentals, which is a big thing here, um, is, that's considered business income. So, if they have rentals in Athens and they have a 10, uh, $10,000 gain, but they have some in Albany, and they have a $15,000 loss, um, they, Albany's not a taxing entity, so then they will try to, then they will get, take a $5,000 net operating loss in Athens. And, um, and then it can work the other way, where if it was Nelsonville in Athens, and they had a $15,000 loss in Nelsonville, $10,000 gain here, then they, they, if they try to take that loss in Athens, we'd be refunding money, but they didn't pay us anything, because they had a loss in Nelsonville, okay?
You're saying this is the way it used to be?
No, this is what, this is what they allow a loss, which is why we need wording in there to try to guard us from that. There's nothing in there that says we can't change that part of it, um, to, uh, otherwise, a lot of the other entities are just talking about giving, getting away from a credit odd at all, that's what would, would solve that, is if you don't allow any credit. We don't really wanna do that, the major part of our revenue are actually withholding taxes, and, um, 'cause we don't have a lot of big industries and things like that, so that will still be the same, people who live here and work in Nelsonville and pay there can get a credit, and so, um, we don't, uh, we don't necessarily wanna do that to our residents, be able to counsel, I guess, but we definitely want to prevent that, um, filing for a refund from us when we haven't, you know, received any taxes from them for the business, uh, income.
So it sounds like we've got a lot to learn between now and, uh, when you begin to present.
Well, yeah, that's why I communicated with Member Reiser last week, and said, you think I should start this now or wait, but, um, you know, things will move kinda fast, and, you know, you'll have your, you know, recess, and then when you come back, there'll be a lot of other things, so, it always seems to go fast in the fall after your recess, so I thought I'd throw it out there.
Well, we'll look forward to, yeah, additional information from you and Tina.
Yeah, this is on public record, if you wanna send it around, although, you know, just caution that it doesn't have our, our local-
It's not the final word yet.
... regulations in there, yeah, yeah.
Well, thanks to you and, and Tina, and-
Yes, she's done a great job, and she has a good attitude about it, I mean, it's the law now, um, and we're not gonna sit around and complain about it, well, maybe a little, but, um, we're gonna deal with it, you know, as best we can, is what we need to do.
And I think cumulatively, the thing for us to understand, and also for our state legislators to understand, is that we've lost, we're losing money on this as the law changes, and, uh, we have some of those summaries from Tina earlier, uh, plus also the loss of local government funds, which you provided for us a few weeks ago, where we've gone from over $800,000 to-
That surprised me, I knew it was going down every year, but that's-
Now, down to $330-some thousand, so-
Yeah, less than half in the last 10 years, so, that's a lot of money, that was hundreds of thousands of dollars for the city, and so-
And people wonder where that money's going, and I think it's going to Columbus.
Oh, yes.
Right.
Yes, it's staying there, so.
So, yes, and, uh, question?
Well, not a question, but just a general comment, and you kind of alluded to this, is that, you know, the document that's floating around out there doesn't have our language in it yet, so, you know, more to come on this when a consultant comes in and starts-
It's okay, you know, the mayor or one of you finance members can forward it to the rest of council, just to get an idea of what it looks like. And if you really wanna have fun, go and look at our, our code. Um, another thing, I should point this out about our code, we have two sections in our code now, one are the tax laws, and one are rules and regulations, a lot of it overlaps, but in the past, we've had issues when you change something in one and not making sure it fits with the other one, so we just want one chapter now, and have everything in one chapter, so that, um, it, it's not confusing to accountants, or mainly the ones that go in and look at that, so, um, so it'll be the one chapter, I guess.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinances for second reading, we have one of them tonight, and that's 69-15. It's an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application to the Local Government Innovation Program for a grant to fund a feasibility study for a joint facility to house Athens City and Ohio University Safety Services, introduced by Councilmember Patterson. Our ordinance is for first reading, the first one is 74-15, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the 2016 State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs for Issue One Funds, to execute contracts as required, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Um, we discussed this at committee last week, and, uh, just wanna verify with the mayor, we were talking, what we're looking at is a sewer project.
Uh, yes, probably the, uh, Congress sewer project at this point. Uh, and again, the deadline for this, I think, is September 4th, so we're trying to start it up at one point here. Um, we'll, it's a Public Works, uh, grant, it's about 400,000 most of the time, it's with District 18, which is run through Buckeye Hills, Hocking Valley Development District, scoring is such that, uh, we may get it, we may not, we just have to craft it properly, but I need the-
So we really need to suspend this evening?
Um-
We can't.
We don't have enough people?
You don't have the people.
Okay.
I suspect we'll have to have a couple of special sessions, at least one next week, maybe another one to finish it off, depending on what we can pull together.
Okay.
Because, you know, you won't have a meeting till after the deadline.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 75-15 is an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 31st and November 1st, 2015, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens for Halloween weekend, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President, um, there are several ordinances here, um, they do not need to be suspended, we'll just read them through, but they all have to do with our Halloween event, which is, um, October 31st, Saturday, October 31st, and, uh, the, the general ordinances that we pass regarding these large events.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 76-15 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise for scheduled bandstand performances hosted by the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee on October 31st and November 1st, 2015, of Halloween weekend, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, let's move forward.
Okay. Ordinance 77-15 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 31st and November 1st, 2015, Halloween weekend, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Same, it's taking care of all of our ordinances that we need to for that weekend. Ordinance 78-15, an ordinance adopting the Athens County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for the City of Athens, introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Madam President, um, hopefully everyone in council got a chance to peruse through all 146 pages of this document. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and read, there's multiple wheresses, and I feel they're important to read, so I'm going to. Whereas, it is agreed that it is beneficial for the community to determine the threat posed by various natural hazards, and to plan in ways to reduce those, those threats. And, whereas, the City of Athens, here with after, referred to as municipality, is required to have a natural hazard mitigation plan in order to be eligible to receive federally, federal emergency funding in the event of a presidentially declared natural disaster. Uh, and, whereas, the Athens County Regional Planning Commission prepared, uh, an existing natural hazard mitigation plan for our community in 2006 pursuant to Ordinance 146-06, and whereas, the city, the Athens County Regional Planning Commission is prepared to write a multi-jurisdictional hazard, natural hazard mitigation plan that will cover all of the municipalities in Athens County, and, whereas, our municipality is a member in good standing with the Athens County Regional Planning Commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city, the council of the City of Athens and Athens County, Ohio, Section 1, the City of Athens hereby adopt the Athens County Multiple Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, and then the last one, again, it being in full force upon signature of the mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have a resolution for second reading, this is Resolution 815, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. We now have announcements and other businesses, other business, uh, the first item would be a motion to accept the auditor's June 2015 report, do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept these auditors' reports, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the motion carries. And I believe we have-
I have one.
An appointment, yes?
An appointment. Uh, I move, uh, we appoint Jim Sands to the Historical Preservation Board to replace Sarah Landers, who is, who has left, and then we all know Jim, and, uh, he's more than qualified for this position, and I think we're very, they're very, very lucky to be able to get him.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approving the appointment of Jim Sands to the Historic Preservation Commission, and, um, Jim, who, as you referenced, has many years of service to this, to the city, and is an Athens NATO, so, be a real addition to that commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, any other announcements? Uh, I note that we will have, be having a committee meeting next Monday night, and so committees that need to meet, I'm thinking Service-
Yes, please.
-Service Safety for the Recreation-
Finance Personnel.
Finance and Personnel for the Armory Appropriation, does transportation or planning and development need to meet? No, okay, so we'll consider those two committees then.
Along with the special session.
And the special session. Uh, now we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Yes, Joan Kornansky, if you'd come up and-
Come on down.
State your name, sign in for us.
Uh, Joan Kornansky, and actually, I have a question on, uh, a communication item that was presented by, uh, Councilmember Patterson, and, um, get my name down here. Um, and, and the question is to do with the issue of, uh, Arts, Parks, and Recreation Advisory Committee recommending that at the next session, uh, council consider appropriating the funds for the new, the construction or the approval of the new city pool, and my question is, I, my question is, what is the process? So, if, if this comes before committee, and then it's moved into an ordinance, and it has three readings, and then the money is then appropriated, what does that mean in terms of defining the type of pool plan that the citizens of Athens will receive? And that is my question.
And, and I will stipulate that, that right now, it's an agenda item not covered on our agenda previously, so we could clarify tonight, but we're not ready to get involved in a committee discussion.
Okay.
So we can clarify briefly, process only, and then the full discussion will be next week.
Okay.
The process is that we need to find out in terms of engineer, engineering and planning for the, for whatever the pool becomes, and that basically allows things to move forward in that direction, but we're, it's appropriating the 7.3, um, so we do have monies there to start doing some planning, uh, in terms of engineering design.
Okay, and this will be brought in a committee meeting next Monday for discussion?
Correct.
Okay, well, then I will bring my questions at that point, and hopefully some other people will also be here, because I think there's a lot of questions about what was seen at the meeting, uh, several weeks ago.
Thank you.
I guess I have one other question, this is a really odd question, it does have to do with a piece of legislation, um, the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, and, and I was at previous, a previous city council meeting, maybe more than one, when it was discussed, and, and some of the possible events, natural hazards that were, would occur, were discussed, and so my question is, are such as, those hazards would be floods or et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are they all individually itemized in this plan?
I believe that-
Or do they just speak in general to any natural?
No, they're, they are individually listed in here under the plan, but I believe, is this, Mayor, help me out, is this document available?
You should have it available, if not, we can get it out there. It's, it's basically the draft, but it has to be accepted, um, there are individual processes, but really, a lot of it has to do with what you do in case of a flood, uh, some of the other ones, of course, would be wind, storms, tornadoes, uh, rivetime flood versus flash, uh, some of the other parts are actually evaluations of what the, assessment of what the damage would be in a case of a flood, um, and, and, and actually mitigation processes. Some of it actually do with awareness, uh, in terms of educating the population of where to build or not to build. Again, since it's, uh, county-wide and all the other cities involved, it's a, it's a blend of all the potential hazards, I mean, I don't think Albany will have a flood problem, but we would, so therefore, it's a balance.
Well, I guess my question is, and this is not to make any kind of a statement, but it occurred to me while the discussion was going on that no one mentioned earthquakes, and I had just been reading that day about all the earthquakes in Oklahoma due to, uh, injection wells, and I, I, so without going any farther, I, I just wanted to know if such a thing, I mean, it also happened in Ohio, in northeastern Ohio, because of injection wells, there were earthquakes, so, I'm just wondering if, if someone had the foresight to, at the county level, put something like that in the plan, and it's just a general question, I have no background on this, I, it just struck me as one of those natural hazards that maybe currently we should be concerned with, if it's not in the plan, it should be considered.
I can tell you it's in the plan.
Thank you.
Earthquake is in the plan.
Perfect.
Thanks, thanks for the comments, Joan, Ms. Kornansky. Uh, Councilmember Pappy, did you have any other?
I wanted to, uh, Ms. Kornansky brought up the pool issue, and, um, we are, um, discussing, Council President, um, there was discussion of special sessions and, um, and conversation- President, there was discussion of special sessions and, and conversation regarding the pool issue in particular. And many of us are leaving and going to be out of, out of town and unavailable on council. We have had one council member who hasn't been here for a few meetings. I know, I will not be here for several meetings. Well, one meeting that was scheduled, which is next week, and I'm not sure about some of our other members. I mean, we are going into recess. Most of us attend 99% of the time.
I was going to turn off the lights here.
Yeah, so I am concerned about such a conversation going on regarding immunity pool when many on council may not be available. That's what I want to say.
I, I hear your communication, and I appreciate that, and I, and I really think we will be having discussion on all of these items next week, and then it will be, and you're saying you will not be present next week?
I will not, and I believe another person won't be available, and I don't know about our other...
Councilmember Fall is away, I'm not sure that Councilmember Butler is, he will be back next week. So this is a concern moving forward. I know we have a recommendation, but...
Well, okay, this would be a committee meeting next week to, there's several aspects. I think I was talking to the clerk of council, whether we'd be appropriating the entire amount or just enough for design and engineering. That'll be a discussion that would come forward. Again, designing it, the process would be to appropriate the money, put out an RFP or an RFQ to find out who would come up and say, we're going to do a design of a pool. That design, of course, is what they'll, we'll have to evaluate along the way, but that's further down the line. Really, from my point of view, the next step is to get this, to get the money appropriated so we can start the process. I mean, we're a little bit behind. We were thinking we'd be able to at least have something definitive to start replacing the old pool over the winter. In terms of finance and personnel, you may want to bring the auditor in to have a little bit more discussion about where the tax rolls will be, since she thought she wasn't going to be able to get a shot at it. But I think there's a lot to learn on that. I looked at it in my eyes glass over, because the implications I do not understand. So you've got items to put on finance personnel. Whether, when you're talking about the design of a pool, you know, if you've got the qualifications, put a bid in, find out what it takes.
Nevertheless, the recommendation is for 7.3 million for the outdoor pool. And that's outdoor pool only, and it is, it's a concern. So what we will do is, we are going to have a special session, and before we have the motion to go into that executive session...
I think we have one...
Do we have another comment? Yes, come forward, please, I'm sorry. And if you could just announce your name and...
Okay.
And sign in.
Good evening. My name is Erica King. I'm with WUB News, and I have a question. I am doing an investigative piece on panhandling in Athens County. I'm not sure if you're aware of the statement the police chief made, Tom Pyle, made about panhandlers, saying, don't, it's, he advised not, the citizens not to give their money to panhandlers because they're, quote, "masters of deception," and they use the money given to them to feed their drug and alcohol addictions. And interviewing Tom Pyle, he said that something down the road of city council passing an ordinance about aggressive panhandling in this city, and I was wondering if, is there any ordinance in rotation of something like that?
We typically with the communications, don't answer questions, we'll accept comments, and so we were, I think, probably making exceptions at a number of instances this evening with extenuating circumstances. I think I can answer for council, and at the present moment, there is no discussion for that coming forward. We're going to allow, we're going to make a motion to go into executive session in just a few moments here. We will allow three or four minutes if you would like to talk to some of the individual council members about this. And then also, when we come out of executive session, if you wanted to wait, if you didn't get all your questions answered, we will open the doors again before we adjourn, and so that you could come and talk to additional council members.
Okay, great.
So thank you very much for making the comments, and we'll hopefully be able to spend a few minutes before going into executive session to speak with you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. And so I would now entertain a motion for council to go into executive session.
I move.
And you, when you move, you will need to explain that we're going into executive session for what purpose?
To go into executive session for opinion litigation.
And the people included in the executive session will include then...
All council members.
Okay, and the law...
And the law director. And the mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, and we will need the voice vote, we'll start with Councilmember Reisner.
I vote aye.
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 Okay, we will be going into executive session in, let's say, five minutes.